Okay. No, not yet. It's doing something. And it's showing you guys.
It is showing us?
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it.
I'd like to call the Thursday, October 19 board meeting to order at 6:59 PM. Roll call?
Chairman Holster?
Here.
Vice Chair Naprio? Here. Secretary Cianna? General Sammle? Here. Zachary Canada?
Here.
Kim Dawson? Here. Victoria Lanza? Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I have to.
Visitors? Student representatives?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, um.
No football tonight?
Not tonight. My name is Aiden. I'm a senior in North Grandford High School, and I'm a student representative. Sorry I missed last week. I was at a football game. We were playing up in Plainsfield. We won 42-6.
That's good.
That's why we excuse you.
Otherwise, it would've been a problem.
Too trouble.
I'm a senior. I'd like to go to college and major in engineering or business. So to start off, NBHS hosted a career fair for grades 11 to 12 on October 18th. Students were provided two keynote speakers and could attend three informational sessions during the event. I personally attended sessions about finance and engineering, and I found them really informational. Everyone else I talked to also really enjoyed them. Our speakers gave us advice, told us about their life and how they came to their success. Secondly, the college board has recognized NBHS. NBHS was named the college board's honor roll for students' success during the 2022 and 2023 school year. The college board considers AP enrollment, testing performances, and participation rate for graduating seniors. Over one-third of our graduated seniors took AP courses.
That's a lot.
Took at least one AP course, including the standardized assessment at NBHS. Also, our fall sports have continued to flourish at NBHS. Field hockey, football, girls soccer, and boys soccer, also cross-country, have all approached the midpoint of this regular season. Homecoming is scheduled for October 20th, tomorrow night, with an afternoon soccer match and an evening football game.
And then a couple other things. On October 3rd, 38 students, including myself, the AP Environmental Science, AP Biology kids, we went to Chaffew Hollow with our three science teachers. And during this, we participated on site experiments during the trip, including water sampling and collecting. It was very awesome. We got to go in waiters, and we got to go in the actual water and sample. It just felt like doing one of those cool college courses testing. This was awesome. It was awesome. And then all NBHS grade nine, 10, and 11 students completed their PSAT testing on Wednesday, October 11th, during this scheduled school day. And the PSAT testing has been modified by the college board again this year and is a more condensed version than the prior version. And all testing is also completed by students while using their school-issued Chromebooks. It was online.
Oh, okay.
And then lastly, the National Honor Society induction ceremony, which I was also at, was held on October 17th, where students who have qualified academically can submit applications, and official induction process takes place each fall. It was awesome. It went very smoothly, very well, and the kids were great.
Who was the MC?
MC?
Who ran the show?
Oh, obviously Mr. Thor. Well, okay, so. I'm the president of NHIS.
I just want to spin off a little bit about the career fair. Sam Bodie and Jen Tetso, they did an amazing job of securing a number of professionals to come in. I was able to go and travel through and see some of the presentations and the variety of the presentations. A lot of hard work went into that, and Sam and Jen have to be recognized for just incredible teamwork, working with our administrative team and our teachers to put something like that together. So I'm glad you found it valuable, and it's something that we want to continue to build on in the future for that experience of having real-life people that have gone through it, that are in the field, that went to college and walking through opportunities for you.
Yeah, it was amazing hearing everyone's personal experiences.
Sure.
Built their careers.
Sure.
It was very well organized. Everything flowed very nicely. It didn't feel confusing at all.
And it was spread throughout the building.
Right.
And we had local, our local police force there. We had a female resident trooper who was wonderful, talking about her experiences being on the force and how that came to be. We had graduates, Subadra's daughter, whose medical sales was there. And we had a teacher from the Durham system that teaches science that also came back, and it was gorgeous. So it was a great thing. So thank you.
It's a good way to network as well.
Absolutely. Last dismissed.
Thank you, guys. See you next month. Good luck at the game.
Thank you. You have a lucky one.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the October 19th, 2023 North Grandford Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second discussion?
Thank you so much. She was my teacher as well when I was here, and I cannot believe that she lives in the room. So thank you.
Since that is amazing, too. Yeah. I had her, and then my son had her, which is kind of strange.
No, and 52 years in the profession.
I don't know what to say about that.
Short of amazing. So, you know, we want to thank Ms. Webster for her dedication to our kids. And she's a big T-Bird supporter, fan. She's always there, and we wish her nothing but her best.
Hopefully she can enjoy retirement.
Exactly. Thank you.
Something tells me you'll still see her around at games now and then.
Willing to.
Any other comments or discussion for the consent agenda?
We have two field trips you do not have to vote on. Those are just for information.
Wait, we have to still vote on the roll call, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, you were just telling us.
Yeah, just tell them.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, do we not vote on?
They're included in the consent agenda?
They're in the consent. I was just.
Page two.
That's it.
Ready? Yeah.
Chairman Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Naprio?
Yes.
Secretary Cianna? General Sammle? Yes. Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza? Yes.
Thank you. Moving along, I'm going to present you with paper copies of the goals that we worked on in charge of the last meeting. They are front and backside. And then I'm going to, the second pile is from our mental health team. That word from Mr. Canada's goal of looking at and redefining and put some measurables in for that. So it will look a little differently, but it's the same content that was in what he would have asked. For Ms. Naprio's, that was going to turn into more of a capital project, and I'm going to work with Brammer Law and another private company to price out a menu of things that we're all interested in that were in that. So here, sorry, just the mental health.
That's it.
That's mental. Oh, oh, there's that. Okay. That was a spin-off from yours.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm not going to read page by page. We're just going to, collectively, what the administrative team did was to look at air building and the option of looking at student growth, academic achievement, or something with social-emotional learning. And as you'll see, many of them chose to go with measurable student outcomes based upon needs within their building after evaluating standardized scores. That's something that the board has been vocal about, wanting to see a really focused energy towards that, towards pulling everyone up from our youngest and when we start our testing. So as you can see with Jerome Harrison, with iReady and the goal there. Moving through the TBS. Our administrators obviously are here to answer any specific questions, but you'll see measurables. The timelines will come out. There'll be testing and doing benchmark testing throughout the year. So you will be brought up to speed as we progress into the academic period.
Perfect.
Okay, and then obviously the spring is when those scores do come out. So smarter balance for the middle school.
Can I just go through the math quickly? I noticed there's three math goals, which is great because math is a.
A need.
A need, for sure. So on all of them, it says improve two. Can we just modify this measure so we know where we're at at baseline? So we know what percent we're at at proficiency currently?
Sure.
And then can we have a numerator and a denominator? So I know that the denominator remains the same from baseline to our target, right? And are all students included? And or is it just?
So they'll tease out, it'll be identified special ed students from regular grad, and then they'll combine.
And that'll be identified so we can see.
So you can easily tease that out.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Jump in, Dr. Welch, or any administrators if you want to comment on any specific questions.
I like the math goal a lot.
Okay. High school, obviously focusing on the SAT. And obviously now that we're testing Mr. Steffler, the kids are exposed to the PSAT.
In the fall, yeah, so the juniors would have the same content year.
Sophomores would be exposed as well in our labs are running.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've had a pass with the course that we had for four years. The juniors have that PSAT along with ninth, 10th through 12th, and we have the SAT in March. March 20th, the SAT gate. Those percentages, I'm not sure what they do, based on our course of dawn or state average. Of course, that's a snapshot across the junior years, a point snapshot. So there's other building-based goals that we do have that incorporate the entire school. We thought that would be a real measurable one. That's important that we report on anyway this year.
Do most of our students take the SAT and the benchmark tests?
Yeah, the marks are set by the college board.
Okay.
Uniform. And every kid by state staff needs to take and has to take the SAT. But during the COVID, our participation rate was often charged beyond the state average, so that didn't track.
Okay, so if we looked at it, it'll be calculated the same way with special education?
Yes.
So we can kind of see how it tracked through.
Kids who have extended time in their IDPs or small test settings, who have that combination through the process with the health or who have to do paperwork, electronic paperwork ahead of time to get that extended time for small test settings, but they're all taking state tests on the same day.
And can we get some statistics on any, if there's like a significant amount of children that didn't take it for some reason, right? Because that might skew.
We have to hit nine, our target is always 95% of the four years. When we met that, we received it.
Okay, so it's not really a issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, they show up. They take the test and that. Yeah, it's advantageous having it within your own school during the academic day. It's such an advantage.
Yep.
Okay, so if there's no other questions on high school curriculum instruction, it kind of overall wraps around the entire district with what Dr. Welch has been working on with instructional coaching model and instructional vision, district instructional vision, mission, and what they're doing. And this starts from K through 12.
I don't understand this, just because.
So Carter, do you want to just walk through?
I don't know what MTC, BTC.
Walk through your acronyms and.
I didn't retain it. I'll be honest. I didn't retain it.
So MTC is making, thinking, does it really for that over the years?
And BTC is an extension of that building, thinking cultures, or cultures of thinking.
Okay.
Approach to the whole school and higher.
Okay.
PDEC, walk through it. Dr. Welch?
Oh, PDEC.
I'm just going to throw anecdotes.
Evaluation committee, that's our local group that, you know, informs what we do with professional development. Helps with our evaluation, and both teacher and instructor. They're working extensively this year with those challenges.
TVAL?
Teacher evaluation.
I'm just.
The obligation that I'm reading this year on instruction.
We do not have a K9 in the building, Lucy and Ken.
A lot of academics education.
So what does survey impact mean 2024? What does that mean? Just.
So we, obviously, we track this by some of our professional colleagues. We'll be surveying both the teachers and the students related to this approach and how it's working for kids. So we collect that information and how the teachers progress along and continue developing this craft and how they're doing and how the learning is being earned. So you kind of look at that through the survey.
So you surveyed the students and the teachers?
We did.
I like that.
Any questions on the curriculum? Now listen, if you go home tonight and this is keeping you awake, email, and we'll get answers back. If it's not keeping you awake, that's a good.
It's not a shy group.
Certainly, lastly, certainly not least, the district-wide mental health goal. You can see it's expanded greatly from its original form with everything included, but then just into more detail regarding schools, levels, interventions, board policies. It's pretty descriptive, and I think it embodies everything. But there's measurable metrics throughout this, which I think is what you wanted and what you were asking for, and you'll see that. And our mental health teams here, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Stover, so if there are any questions about this.
Zach, I want you to pay particular attention to make sure it's like the spirit of.
Yeah, I mean, he's got the four bullet points that are straight from, straight from his mind.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing. I haven't looked at this, obviously. So, I mean, we'll look at it later.
Anything, just, we'll get right back to you. Okay, all right.
I like how you mixed up with like curriculum that is very easily measured, like math and.
With the focus.
Competency, right? And then I like how you mixed in mental health and also like curriculum development. So you can look at the school from a holistic perspective as opposed to just a linear lens, like just one thing, because that's not what we want for our students anymore. We're trying to develop whole people, so I like that.
Okay, so our computers are on, they'll remain on for any input or comments, questions.
Just as a open, you know, brief comment, how did you feel about going about it this way compared to previous years? You know, we.
I had to scream and holler.
You know, I mean, I don't.
Collectively, the nice part is that.
Was it advantageous? Was it kind of like, hey, this is a good idea? What's your feedback coming?
You know, you have to feel good about what we're presenting as our district goals and missions because you're the ones who are going to be funding and fighting for our initiatives. And that's important. We know that, you know, math right now in this country is at a state opinion with what we're seeing. It's something in North Grandford that we emphasize, we want to put a lot of emphasis on. We've hired coaches, we've done a number of things to put labs in place. And you want to see that you're getting the bag for your investment with outcomes, student outcomes, as early as we possibly can with our management. So that being said, it was a healthy process.
Yeah.
And there were three or four goals that each administrator was charged with bringing forward. And then we sat through and teased out the ones that we thought were of the most importance to the board. And that's how we came up with it.
The next thing I'm going to ask, and I don't want to ask you right away, but once we go into budget season, and that's in January-ish, think about things that we have gaps in, right? Or that is your kind of must-haves and your like needs and wants list. So that when we're building our budget, and we know that oftentimes it's, we don't get much in our budget. But if we start thinking now and we can back up our asks with some data, we might have more success on why we need it, right? Like, and really put it from many angles, kind of like our goals are. So that when we're presenting it to town council, we have that information. Also, if we have it early enough, we could start to grease the wheel a little bit with town council so they know it's coming and that they're not kind of taken out of the blue when they see a larger request. And also capital stuff, if you're building, you need something, let us know so that we can look at that, too.
So the administrative team received information from Ms. Wong for meeting dates. They're all going to meet individually with Ms. Wong with their packets to go through. And my narrative was keep in mind that where we're at as a district in these times, keeping in mind our staffing levels and our enrollment with what we're coming off as a community with the building projects, the police department. So very, very realistic numbers, so that we're not going through a number of steps. You know, the wish list is one thing, but then there's the reality of what's really critically important to North Grandford right now. So they're aware of that and teaching and learning and, you know, instructional contact time, controlling our staffing size with our numbers.
Yep, exactly.
All right?
You have a due date for when you want these comments, if any comments are made?
I would like them in January. That's what we're going to really.
Sorry, not for the financials, I'm talking for the goals. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and within the next week or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just.
Just because they're going to be starting moving on them. So if there's a significant shift, we need to know that before. They're already like knee-deep in it.
Okay. Communications, you have your board priests. I'm not going to go through those. You know, it's in the packet. We have the student performance, Dr. Welch, if you come forward. We're going to dim the lights. And. And go through this. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Dr. Welch, science testing in what grades throughout the district for science standards?
Sixth grade, eighth grade, and 11th?
Five year old.
Let me see the overview.
Are you still coming? Do I take one?
All right. I thought we got enough. I think we're good. Mary have one? Mary should have one in case she's got questions.
Does everyone have a copy? Put your hand up.
One more going back. Going back.
Yep. I'm going to snuggle up to Zach.
Let's do it.
All right, so that's coming up. In front of you, you have a packet of the slides, so you can look more closely at the graphs, the information that's coming up in the slides. This presentation is very similar to the format that we used last year. So it looks at kind of, you know, what are we attempting to do really? What's the overarching goals? How is each school doing on smarter balance, on NGSS, the SAT? And then based on those results, what are the schools' kind of major action sets moving forward? So that's our overview. So just kind of the 30,000 vote, what does it all mean? So we are continuing to make progress to that 60% efficiency goal in all tested areas. Some cases, we are significantly outpacing that. So in English arts, out of the seven tested grade levels, we fit that 60% in five of them. In math, we can see as makes sense that the area of focus were two of them. And science, line up with three, has hit that 60%. We continue to work on that math area. We're going to do more on all scores. I think it's important to highlight that TBS is continuing to do really well and showing that consistent growth and success across grade levels. They certainly have areas they're targeting, but they remain almost a flagship, I would say, in the district in how they're performing. NBIS is making progress each year. You know that they've been behind over a long period of time and starting to close those gaps. And there's been some good work and hope for progress. They are. The high school, a lot of success in their AP. As you heard from our student reps talking about our AP participation, our ECE courses, and they're working as we have an improvement of scores in the SAT. Central office, our focus is providing that support for the schools, promoting those efforts for schools to collaborate around those pockets of success and how do we spread that wealth into other places where we're not quite achieving them yet. And Scott has said this alone, that we're committed to that trend of continuous improvement, not just these isolated pockets of success. I always say this to the media, but I don't say this to you, that those test scores are a balanced area of our focus. They're not the defining thing that we're shooting for and is the purpose of our education. We know it's an important measure that we're tested on and that we're evaluated by the outside of them. But we are really chasing that good teaching and learning for students and staff alike, and that's what we're driving toward. We know when we do that well, we're going to improve student performance. He said hopefully. So English and English Arts, just to let you know, consistent trend of success, some growth. This is just an overview of the graphs that are coming up. And we're going to continue to look at those high needs performance groups and continue to strengthen that through our SRBI program, which is, stands for Scientifically Research-Based Intervention. And our flex is that kind of the blocks that exist in all those to try and enclose those gaps with students in the schedule. So this, I know doesn't project well for years at home, or I'm trying to see this from the audience, but I know youth in terms of the packets have this here. So what it shows you is district comparison in the tested areas and grade levels. So you're looking at third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade in English Language Arts. You can see the different graph where it is doing well here at the top in those areas. So we continue to be very proud of those areas.
Any questions on, can you read that from where you're sitting?
Yeah. Because there's some.
I understand they have the packets, but some of us who are, I sort of getting a little.
That's why I put it up there.
I know. I understand, but I'm saying. You can see it.
I don't remember us being so high on it. We were always.
In the last couple of years, TBS has been really doing well. Yeah. They're competing up there with the top schools, and sometimes they've gotten even some of those. And go for sizes of people.
Sorry.
K2, 3, 5, 6.
Sorry.
Oh, I see what you're doing now. You were thinking like, I was there, and that's Joe.
I said, Joe, I'm sorry.
Joe's standing to the mall right now. And your staff is sitting here too.
Great job. I get it.
Everywhere, but it starts at K2 because without that preparation and hard work, it wouldn't be prepared to commit for.
Right.
All right. This is pre-K through 23 is page.
Next, we have the next three grade levels for English Language Arts. You can see I have, there's some progress. We're not where we want to be, but we're not where we were. So this is, this is good news. We're moving, and we want to continue to be confident and enclose those gaps. So that's promising. We're hopeful, we'll stay at it. If you look, this is the SAT scores looking over time. Kids meeting the benchmark target percentage-wise, so our parent is doing really well comparatively. You can see just below, we just have to go over the stats in there.
And you know, that's like their first take of them. Most of the kids taking it again would be much better.
Yeah. And we have, you know, we'll talk about it as we get to the goals for the math. We're not quite, we're going to be in some of the strategies that we're talking about. This slide I shared with you always, Rob Ford, who's an excellent data cruncher at the high school, looks at this over time and really does a fantastic job kind of looking at the growth parts of college board sets, how we do across PSA and SAT, and what's kind of our growth with the cohort groups. So you just, that last column shows you kind of our total growth area by class. You know, that looks pretty good there in English Language Arts or evidence-based reading and writing. So I should be saying for SAT.
I mean, to gain 72, 73, 75 over your four years is impressive.
Yeah. So hold on to that until, you know, when you get to the math, it'll feel.
I'm leaving. We're losing all even the confidence.
I'm not sure. I can't.
And our.
What does the growth mean? Like, show me what the growth means, right? Because I'm looking at the highlighted numbers, and they're lower than 20.
So when you look at just the first one, the college board benchmark, you see the grade nine, PSAT, eight, nine, they were at 410. So that group, when they look at that over time, the expected growth is that 70 number from the PSAT to the SAT. See how it's 410 to 480?
So they tested freshmen at 410. So the projection is to be 480 by the, yes.
So we're comparing against the benchmark, not against other classes.
Correct. We want to be at the 70 or above. We want to be above the 70, that's pretty good.
But the other classes have done better overall. The 2023 class did better, and so did the 2021.
pockets, the general trend.
Did they trend the all through school?
I'm sorry.
I mean, does, do you see that trend all through school? Like, there are classes that trend higher and classes that tend to trend lower?
Oh, yeah, we see that across the district.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Was the benchmark made, like, when was that set?
It's originally by college board.
Okay.
Metrics that they use, I just wouldn't want to speak to them.
Got it. That's fine.
Yeah.
That they, they said in the journal.
Thank you.
That's good.
So mathematics, kind of the overview. Work needs to be done to get us to that 60% for every grade level. We know the PSAT is an area of focus. We know NBIS math is an area of focus. Math at the elementary level is improving and strong. We're seeing some great work from Jerome that's speaking into TBS. So that's good news. So that's good news. The coaching model in the sport to tap the elementary level is, we're starting to see that pay dividends as we move up the ladder. So here you can, you see, again, comparison of town. So our elementary scores are looking pretty strong in some areas. Again, competing right up there with the Guilford and Madison. So those top four, top three. So although math is a downward trend everywhere and everyone's looking to raise the school, we're raising it at a faster rate than some other people are. When you get to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, this was an area where there was a lot of work to be done, as you know. And that work is continuing. And some of the instruction that we're doing, the support, the coaching model has helped to move some of those scores. But obviously, there are some spots that are alarming and we're working on.
Do you think with the, because you put a new coaching model in place, or you've been working on a coaching model? Do you think we'll see any change in this coming kind of test season? Or do you think it'll take a couple of years for that to take hold?
No, I think you're going to see, as we have in the past, I think you're going to see a steady tick up from middle to middle. But I don't think we're going to get to that 60 when we're at the, you know, the 50% in some of those areas. It's going to, that'll take a couple of years. But I'm optimistic that it's continuing to grow. I don't see us moving back with it.
What's a typical percentage point? Like, what is the percentage we could expect to see roughly? Like, what would be realistic?
I mean, I think typically what I do is I look at the groups. So if you see a 47% by a grade level there, we might set a target to be a 55 based on how that group's performing over time. So I would say anywhere from like a five to a seven percent. What year is kind of where I live?
The percentages that are really close, you know, through the SRBI model are pulling out and doing direct instruction to that group that's close. That's, that's where we see our jumps. And that's the thing, identifying those kids that are that close to being at goal and then pulling them. And, you know, that's happening throughout sixth, seventh, and eighth grade right now. So it's dedicating the time and the resources, you know, for those, pulling everyone up from the top up.
And there's the key effort at the middle school too, to encourage and get kids to commit to really taking the test seriously and doing their best on it and sustaining and focusing, which they do really well at the elementary level. We could do a better job within middle school and after work.
And listen, I'll speak, I have two high school seniors right now. And, you know, getting college ready with the SAT scores, oh, the test optional, they're SAT optional. So they already have a ready-made excuse to, you know, not put 110% in. And, and that's, you know, my children are different. That's it. If they see it as, you know, I don't submit my scores, but it's not that big a deal. No, yes, it is. It's a big deal. And that's that whole, you know, challenge of getting all of our students at every grade level. This is important and we want to see your best effort on every assessment they can take. And that's one of the challenges.
Well, some of the schools I know that still do accept, you know, that you put the SAT scores in. They give money based upon SAT scores.
For your merit, if you, if you qualify high enough, if you're, if you're high enough on, you know, on the SAT for merit money. But a lot of kids now that, you know, just, oh, I'm going to go here, I'm going to go there. And if it's not a, you know, competitive school, there tends to be this, well, it doesn't really matter.
Well, not, I could speak to UNH. I could speak to UNH. I mean, their, their merit starts at like $1,100. I mean, 1,100 for an SAT score.
Right.
And, I mean, my son was 10 points away from the next level. And, no, I, you know, I got plenty. I can get in. I more than exceeded what they want for that.
But that's unusual for kids.
But, you know, if I had known that, if I had known, and I was like, well, you should take them again. No, I'm good, mom. I'm not taking them again. I exceeded what they wanted. And had I known that, that it would have gotten him, the next jump in money was $4,000 a year, 4,000 more. Had I known that.
So it's a challenge to get them to that goal. It doesn't matter if it's for the prize money or, or just for yourself to say that, you know what, I can do this. I can reach goal. I'm going to give my best effort. It's helpful for parents if you make that next level because then you're getting, you know, a nice chunk of change.
Right.
Go ahead. Take it back.
Looking at the same slide for math. So again, we know that this is an area of focus for us working toward. Like everywhere, we had significant dips post-COVID, good math scores trends. We see a nice bounce back up in the class of 2024 there. But this is an area we're focusing on. So it's a, it's a big part of our goals and action base. These, I'm not going to go through deeply. You can look closely at them. This kind of shows basic question of looking at cohorts, grade levels over time, and their progress, which we dive into and look at. And these help us kind of set those targets that you were asking about, trying to do the 5%, 7%, 3% where we set those targets. So those are there for both math and English Arts. Science is obviously our other testing area, the NGSS. This is an area that we prioritized last year, are trying to do better with and strengthen our approach across the district. And you can see grade five, TBS again, doing a great job over 70% and almost catching Guilford and Madison there. Great job, Joe.
It's not a competitor.
Grade eight, there was some growth from the previous year, but we're in the middle of the era. We want to get that up to that kind of the same achieving levels for the higher end, get above that 60%. And looking here at the high school, they also had a nice little bump up from where they were previously. So a whole school kind of focused on that test. Really doing the same thing of making sure that they put their best effort and try and adapt to how we are rating and put them. So we'll continue to target that. And in the cohorts by grade, looking into how we've done over time.
What's reaching 13?
So then you get to having a look at all those scores, seeing how we're doing, where we want to be, where to order our efforts. So for the district level, you know, every year, an acronym is all broken down, where you can see those approaches to instruction. We're looking at that, we have that way to improve things. Supporting our structured process for K-12 SRBI, so closing those gaps for kids that are not where we want them to be. How does that process look and how do we strengthen it for kids? We're really working on ourselves as administrators, as a professional learning community, and how do we continue to collaborate with each other and push each other's thinking and strengthen each other as leaders. Supporting our communication about teaching and learning, so all the tools are pushing some of that out. Things helping them understand what we're doing structurally, what is making any physical look like. So that's a big piece of it, so that families can promote that shared language. And obviously, as always, we want from the central office level, make sure the curriculum, the level instruction, the program, and the resources are aligned to that vision and support of these growth. And that comes with budgeting and all of that as well. Next slide is just so you know how each school is kind of attacking it, what they're doing. I don't want to read all of these to you, but they're here and you'll see some nice crossover along the way. It was a really nice connection to that first slide that I shared with you. They're showing that we're more coherent and aligned, I think, than we've been previously. It's just nice things to be able to say that we're working smart and in the same direction together.
I like that continuity.
And again, if you have a question on these, you can ask the, your affiliate administrator to answer it as well. But just kind of looking how each building is attacking that and working toward the same, kind of the same rate. I wouldn't have it in this one just because it's a slightly different. They made some grant money available for what's called a high dosage juvenile program, which is math only in middle school, I think, sixth through eighth. And it's money and resource tied to helping improve math scores specifically for kids that are high. So we're looking hopefully to get some funding.
Oh, good.
Who worked, who wrote the grant? Who wrote the grant?
We did. The curriculum office.
How many grants do you put out a year?
I mean, I think that's hard. Across the district from special services, critical instruction, and others. Yeah. And then high school ones as well. And you can see the stuff here that we talked about in the slides that focused on math, SAT prep. And that's the presentation for you. Of course, I know I ran through it quickly. I know you have the handouts, so if there are questions, you can leave them to Scott. You can certainly do as an team, get those answers, and give those back to the students that you're interested in hearing more about.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Sorry to cut down. So, and this may not be irrelevant to the situation here. But so these test scores are from, from where now? They're from, how do they get this, the bar graphs that you have?
So those are available in the state. The state office side publishes the state performance, county performance, and then we can look at how the districts do.
Like, for our number though, like, what's that testing, it's based off of what test?
It depends on where you're looking at.
Okay, all right, right. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at sixth grade math.
All right, so that's the shorter balance.
Okay. So like, and I just, observation, you know, I'm, second here. Or sorry, fifth grade. So fifth grade says 57.9, right, for math? And then you go to science, it's 70.1. And I'm just, you know, I was a science major and I just remember doing math like every day. How was that, like, I mean, there's chemistry, physics, you know, organic chemistry, all these math heavily involved.
Well, it's fifth grade.
Right, but I'm just saying, so what types of science are, are we talking like earth, earth and?
Life sciences.
Life sciences, okay, got it. That's what I'm looking for.
I was like, basic, basic science.
Okay, yeah. That's it, that's the question.
The way that the test is set up and the organization that runs the test, that's the test of two different organizations as well. So the shorter balance is different than the NGSS.
Copy.
All right, so it's the same charge. If you have anything after looking at the data, if you have questions, just tell them to us. Okay, that being said, we're going to move to the financial report.
You have your reporting for I view. There's really not enough data on the new financial system, other than that you're still working on the...
Yes. You're going to have your financial report for I view.
Ted?
Yeah.
Please, Gregor? Packet?
You have it?
Okay, start again. The implementation of our payroll continues. We have her printing tomorrow. Nothing really new to report there, except that it is a very detailed and slow process. For 2022, 2023, we actually closed out all the open purchase orders as we are required to do for October 1st. And I am happy to report that only $9,000 remain after all purchase orders were closed out. So that will be the figure that goes back to the town. Remembering years past, that has been well over.
A big one.
Yeah.
And you don't, you don't have anyone in the town?
The benchmark that you try and, you know, gauge your budget management to is, you know, within 1%, so we are well under that 1%. So we did very well.
Can you do that again?
Good job.
We will try. We'll go for 8,000 next time.
Good job, Martha.
For 2022, 2023, 2024, our year, I just want to say we are still very early in our fiscal year. And of course, we're heading into the winter months and that always brings lots of questions as to oil and snow and all that unpredictable things. So the idea now is just proceeding with caution. And, you know, with the rising costs and everything, I think we're all cognizant of that. Picked out a few things that wanted to draw your attention to. They were here. In substitutes, we've already spent $24,000 in a substitute line. So that is something that we need to keep an eye on. Our health insurance, we continue to pay that on a monthly basis. And with that, our employees contribute their dues. So that's why on this report, you see a negative. So each month, that negative goes down. We did have a retiree, a teacher, who did retire in June, but they did not take their severance until after the last year. So that is what this negative on the report is, the $3,800. And workers' comp, our premium this year was $339,000. We had limited $318,000. So we are currently over in our workers' comp line by 21,000. So that's something to watch. Our rentals for past years is up, is estimated to be over again this year based on our actual number from last year. So that's another thing that we need to watch is our use of past years. And the telephones, specifically the cost of the new system at high school, right now, we're estimating to be almost over by $14,000 there. So one of the interesting things this year that we're going to see, that we really don't have any benchmark on, is the cost of running the new buildings. So what are the utilities going to be? What are the, you know, heating and all of that? Are we going to be saving money in some areas or are we going to be spending more? So that's going to be interesting to see how that plays out this year. As Scott said, we've already...
I have a quick question on the copy.
Yeah, of course.
Is this going to be an overage every month or accumulate over the year?
No, that's the estimated for the year.
Okay.
Estimated for the year.
Again, the phone was the new system that went to the high school. And I can guarantee you that our heating costs are going to be less than the high school over time. It's, it's small and tall. It's more efficient. There's better glass. So we're going to be in good shape. We just need a nice mild winter.
Yes. 24, 25 budget is, we just started. So as Scott said, I'll be getting with administrators and we'll be getting all of the data together to have it ready for you at the end of January. And for Fund 25, right now, we have a balance of $399,000 in Fund 25. And I listed there the expenditures so far for the first quarter, which totaled $36,000. We had some professional services, some software, a payment for munis, and some athletic equipment, so.
We lost some athletic equipment in transition. Things disappear. Where are they? We have no idea. We have a lot of bodies moving, a lot of different things, and we have to have holes. We have to have physical holes. We have to catch soccer balls. And so that's the exposure for athletes.
So I did include a summary year-to-date report for you for 22, 23, so that...
So Fund 25, do you anticipate us going for that this year, like the beginning of that?
For all intents and purposes.
Okay.
For things that we absolutely need, we're not going to rely on 25 to bail out the budget for next year. So we are strategically looking at things, big picture things that we need, that we want. We have a number of things in mind, an outbuilding by the football field for storage of a lot of our equipment, football equipment, teams out there. So that money will be dwindling down this month. It's not going to be the safety net for...
In short, if we don't spend it all this year, it's going to be a point of contention for town council, election season. We want to get, but again, we don't want to use it to bail out our budget because it gives a unrealistic view of operating.
So we have strategically put things in place that we need in each month. You'll see these changes.
Is there, is there a Fund 25 in this stuff?
Report, yes. I can get that for you.
Okay.
Have you included in the month, like, should that be included in what you normally would hand out every month? Just like a, or similar, it doesn't have to be as, you know, not in munis.
I don't always include it, but I certainly can include it. I believe I did report on it in August and I wasn't here for the last one. But I can certainly, it's not a problem.
Very good. Thank you. At least everyone tells.
Yeah, that's a good deal.
And I will, for next month, I will print the report. I apologize that you've been thinking.
That's fine.
To do that. The year-to-date report you have in front of you, and then I do have budget transfers. I have some cleanup for 22, 23. They are all salary lines. And the reason why I'm asking for the transfers is so that as we go into the budget season, if you look back on the salary lines, you'll see what we actually needed and it increases, will double what it should.
Right.
So that's the reason for twenty-two, twenty-three. I did make sure that there is no, there is no real reason for us to do transfers for a year that is closed because technically the only line we have is the bottom line, and that's what the auditors look at.
So when do we get audited again? I remember.
So they've already been here.
Okay.
They were here in the, in the summertime, and then they came for maybe four days in September. And they will be, because we have munis now and they have the ability to go online, they have their own sign-on, they were able to go in and do a lot of the testing virtually from their office because they can see all our attachments. They probably will come back in the office maybe next month, but I believe most of the fieldwork has been done.
We get the report normally towards the end of December, right?
We have to have the audit filed to the state by December thirty-first. So you should have it either before December thirty-first if they get it early to the state or right after the first year.
Do you and the town get it at the same time?
Yes, it's only one audit, and we are actually in only one line in the audit.
Okay, so we'll get it, so as soon as you get it, can you send the report out with any findings to the board?
Sure.
If we don't have a board meeting for three weeks, send it to us so we have it with any call-outs on it, just so we know.
Okay.
And then we can discuss it at the actual board meeting, but just in case.
And then budget transfers for the, for the current year.
Do you need us to make a motion for that?
Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfers as submitted for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Now, do you want, you need a separate motion for the twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes, if you could.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfers as submitted for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Any questions?
Yep.
Okay. Student role, you're gonna pass the updated sheet around, October twenty-two through October twenty-three. Bruce Williams wants the data, we submit this to the state. As you can see, we are up five, six students, fifteen, thirty-five on the date of reporting. And it just obviously runs across from pre-K all the way across. So we have, when you look at seven, eight, the nine, you know, larger classes with one thirty-two, sixteen, twenty-eight, there's a lot of building going on in town. Obviously, we're out and about driving around, and you see a lot of the development, that these are large homes that are going up, you know, look out.
Yeah.
You know, in the next six or seven years, I think we're gonna start to see little blips for pre-K and K.
We still hover around the same number.
Yeah, we're pretty level.
You're pretty level.
We are.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we'll go up.
That's a trend, but I, I mean, it surprises me that at least times that on Totucket Road, wrapping back through, we look at, there's eight or ten new homes going up. Head on the corner, and they're large, large homes, so it's, it's a big, I think, value and.
That could be at least two kids a home.
Yeah.
How many can that high school hold?
You know, we'll stay there till the.
How many can the high school hold?
Hold?
Yeah, like, we built a smaller high school. How many can they hold?
When I say small and tall, we could, we could hold probably six hundred students easily.
Okay.
Easily.
We're still, what are we still, around five hundred-ish?
Yeah, four, four hundred.
Four twenty? Four thirty-nine?
Four thirty-nine. Four forty-three, I think. What do we have? Four forty-three.
Safe, we're picking them up all right.
Holding signs at bus stops.
Fourth floor of that building, they're coming. And, well, I'll get to that later. All right, any questions on enrollment? Okay. Town manager pending request, just a couple updates from basketball, is gonna be sharing our facilities, I've been working with the town manager and, and our team to make sure that there's, you know, facilities for all of the extra activities for people that want to use the facilities. You know that we are down a high school gym, which is a huge impact for our high school and middle school teams. And Lori Conley, our athletic director, has been working with all of these outside programs to make sure that everyone has equitable opportunities to get in and run their programs. And I think we're at a really good place with Jerome Harrison for our boys and girls basketball team and keeping them in town. And kudos to everyone involved. It's not advantageous, you know, the state-of-the-art gym that's gonna come in, these kids are gonna miss, that are seniors, the juniors, and everyone below are gonna have that. But to be able to play in your town and not have to go to a neighboring town to play, I think is as good as we can possibly do. So that's.
I personally polled the girls' basketball team.
You what?
I polled the girls' basketball team. You know I did, to ask them.
I'm surprised by that.
I, I know, the wallflower I am, but I wanted to know. I, I wanted to know, do you want to play in East Haven? Do you want to play somewhere else, or do you want to play in a home gym? And they wanted to play home. They wanted to play in town, where they grew up, surrounded by their fans, right? Like, they didn't want to be in another gym. And I, I found that actually very morbid.
But the boys are the same way.
And I'm sure they are, I just didn't have access to them.
Yeah, no, they're, so it's a good, it's, it's the best scenario for the circumstances that moment. It, it's an inconvenience, you know, there's no, you know, you look at like the, there's no foods department right now, and so they're running the foods class without a kitchen, they're using the cafeteria, they're doing what they have to do, you know, so it's gonna get better, but you just have, we had to do this year.
And youth sport, and like the youth basketball team and any youth sports are being given gym time, and Lori's working with them, I'm sure, because I know she's like a scheduling genius.
Yeah, she's, she's on it with all of them, so we're in a good place.
Where are they playing? In TBS?
No, no, Jerome. The only, the only size court is Jerome Harrison, that's the only.
Oh, TBS isn't either?
No, it's too narrow, too short, so there's.
Okay, I believe media school was in TBS, okay.
They're, they're both too small. Only other gym that we have is Jerome Harrison that measures ninety-one by fifty.
And that's a different floor though, right?
It's, it's a better floor, but it's fine, it's been, it'll be cleaned every day and it'll be fine.
Okay.
And that floor is new, we put that in probably eight years ago.
I just don't know if it's regulation, I don't know about basketball.
We're okay. There's not a lot of seating, but it'll make for more active and games. Okay, I'm also working with a local farmer in the town on a farm grant, we're doing research on a, kind of a condensed version of a greenhouse with the ability to fast-track and grow vegetables, and it's, it's a state grant, so one of the local farmers has reached out to us, we're working with part of, in our food service director to see if it's something that we want to engage, and we don't want to get into something that we're not gonna be able to, to do and have to be advantageous for us because of resources and things like that. If it works for us, I'd love to put it on my property of the high school, but that's not the way the grant's written. So if it works and we can engage in that and then get produce from this grant, that'd be great.
Is there also an opportunity to make it some kind of an outdoor classroom or learning classroom?
Well, again, it's all that question of resources and getting it there, like we had the greenhouse before, and there were struggles at times getting, you know, environmental science, that we have to move off site to get there to do it. There's a lot of things that, we'll explore all of that, and Rebecca Malini has all of the communication, she's our guru in science for that, so.
She's great.
Yeah, and so we're open for any ideas as long as it does not put us in a situation where we're not gonna be able to explore them. But it's, listen, you know, I love that.
Will you keep us posted? I mean, I, I like the idea of supporting community, but it's also, while I understand it's free to the farm, it's not free to us, right? Because we're the purchaser of the goods, so it, we are entering into a contract.
Right, and it has to be advantageous.
Absolutely.
Right, so, but I, I like the idea, it's definitely worth exploring.
Yeah. Great, did you put it on mark? The seller, I have it right in my backboard.
I don't know if that's how it works.
Okay. Renovation project, although, listen, the skill is going up, it's, I'll just speak on behalf of what I've observed with the weather, we seem to be getting four days of break days during the week, and then it rains on Fridays or Sunday. So if we stay with that pattern, we're in really good shape for buttoning this building up in the next six weeks, which would then mean, okay, now we get into, you know, windows and interior and things like that. So we had some questions over egress with the auditorium, all of those were resolved today with Mr. Florio. There's a number more questions with the fire marshal or the police department, I spoke to both of them yesterday, we came up with a plan with the fencing, so we have, you know, safe egress from both areas. Our student access point, the fencing was put in there, we'll be able to park and walk up the opposite side now to come into the building, which is a good thing. So from where we're at, we're moving along, we're, we're at a good pace, fingers crossed we just continue good weather Monday through Friday. I don't want to spin off on.
No, I think you squared away.
I hear that.
That's good enough. I mean, there's little, little side, little things here and there, but that's.
I don't bring up the side.
Don't do it. It's a three-hour meeting, you don't want.
Those are all conversations that are off the record.
We want high levels, Scott and Beth will handle the side things.
No, no, I, trust me. Community roundup, I'm just gonna read you the date that's in there, the twenty-eighth, it's a wonderful community event now, obviously with, you know, so many, like a need throughout the country, throughout the community, throughout North Frankfurt, any participation, we'll, we'll get involved as obviously our schools, but you know, we do the help, we appreciate it. And that is it.
Committee report? What school sheets do we have this year?
None. We're done.
Just did four.
We're done.
No, just checking, just checking. Budgets as per this curriculum, pension?
No meeting.
Okay. ACES?
Yes.
Wait, oh, shoot. Okay. I actually remember my notes. Okay, and I didn't send out last month's notes, I realized that was in the down to this morning. So if you'd like, I can go over that quick if you want it, or no? Do you wish to like just skip over September?
Is it relevant?
Not really, you don't need to, okay, so we'll go out to.
Are they giving money back to us?
No, they're not there.
I just, I didn't know if it was like something that would have to do with us.
No, so we went over the Wintergreen construction update, that was by David Stein, who's from Silver and Petraselli. Wintergreen is going, looks like a two-year renovation project. They're doing like areas of the school, an old locker room is being turned into a music wing. The old medical center is going to go into a performing arts center, they're doing some bathroom upgrades, so it's periodically through the building, and they're gonna focus hopefully on most of the construction will be during the summer months. We had the executive director present us with his goals for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. We had some new policy reviews for chest feeding and affirmative action. The chest feeding was to make it more inclusive, because it used to be a breastfeeding policy, so they switched it. The terminology, affirmative action was just to make more inclusive language. They had a tentative agreement with their behavioral technicians, there are seventy of these people, they like a two-point-seven-five increase, health premium increase, and a step increase. We also got a status on another construction project at ACES at Chase, and their fiscal report, we are currently four million in the surplus for ACES. That shouldn't last, but it's actually surplus, which they do not normally have this time of year. And they have audits on time, and we received a facilities assessment report and deferred maintenance capital improvement plan for all of their buildings, which is numerous. So that is.
That was easy. All right, do we want to do anything else on the building committee, or did we wrap that up already? Okay, and there was no communication, any new business?
I don't believe so.
No, I think so, all right. Any visitors impressed? Same group, gonna say no. All right, go to the board. Go.
Thank you again for the fruit basket. And I'd just like to say that the eighth grade class is going to Washington, and they are putting, they're laying the wreath on the unknown soldier on Veterans Day.
Oh, nice. The DC trip is in November?
It's like.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, April.
Oh, wow, they used to go way, way, way back in May. Oh, that's nice.
The cherry blossom.
No, that's nice to go in November.
It'll be beautiful, I think.
Yeah. That's neat.
Especially here now, very, very hot.
I'm looking forward to going to TBS tomorrow night for their holiday, fall festival or whatever, trucks, games, and music, so.
Nice.
Looking forward to that, and I'm sure Jerome is having a fun or a one-two. So we'll do Joe and Mark, and then next week, Ben.
I heard Mr. Moyo is performing.
Oh, see, I didn't get that in the flyer.
Mr. Moyo, I didn't expect that.
She must have. Very gracious, you offered, I run a fifth-grade troop of Girl Scouts that are learning about government, and I was thinking about this school government, and graciously offered them to sit down meetings and watch, check, get the November meeting. Everyone will be comfortable with them coming in, doing like a quick, just hi and explain what they're doing, it'll take like two minutes, and then they can sit and listen to office.
How will they do it?
Fifth grade. This is their choice, they want to learn about government, business, and automotive. This is what these girls like to do. And I'm like, you got it, like.
Yeah.
So next week, we're meeting with town council, we're doing a mock for us, and then come here.
The caveat is a ten percent discount on cookies.
Yes.
Free cookies are free. There's never a discount. All right, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November sixteenth.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.